Good evening. It's a pleasure to see each one of you here this evening. We want to welcome you to our August 19, 2013 Pitt County Board of County Commissioners. We also would like to welcome those who are viewing us by way of television. We appreciate your interest in county government. We shall call this meeting to order and we shall now have our roll call. Thank you. We shall now have our invocation and pledge. Commissioner Webb is going to lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Ward is going to lead us in our pledge. May we all stand.
If you'll face the flag, please. Oh, excuse me. You're going to implicate first. I'm sorry, Ms. Webb. I just didn't want to forget.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessings on this county, Lord, and our state. Father, we ask, as we do the business of your people, that you give us wisdom, guidance, and discernment. Father, we ask you to bless everyone in this room and everyone who's watching and everyone in this county, Father, in Jesus's name.
Amen. Now if you'll face the flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda, what I would like to propose that we do is take the two items under presentation and move them up before the public hearing because we have so many people here with our presentations and they may not want to stay for the public hearing. So I would recommend we do that. And also Commissioner Owens has one item he would like to add under Items for Decision and that is about some bar pitches that will be hung in the courtroom. So we can add that as Item 1A under Items for Decision. Do I have a motion that we approve on agenda with those two adjustments? Okay? Second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion to approve the resolution?
I want a motion to approve both of the resolutions. The resolutions for the D.H. Connolly Lady Viking Softball Team and also a motion for the resolution celebrating the accomplishment of our Eagle Scouts. I have the motion second. Let's vote. And the manager and I will go down front and present those.
This evening first, we're going to recognize the accomplishments of the D.H. Connolly Ladies Viking Softball Team for winning the state championship. If we can get the team to come up here, maybe just kind of line up with the coaches. We have a resolution and certificates we'd like to present to you. As they come up, Mr. Chairman, if you would like, once they get up here, I can read the resolution.
That would be great.
Okay. This is a beautifully framed resolution that I'll read aloud for you. It's entitled, "Pitt County Board of Commissioners Resolution of Recognition Honoring the D.H. Connolly Lady Viking Softball Team. Whereas the 2012-13 D.H. Connolly Ladies Vikings played softball with remarkable success and dignity as representatives of Pitt County and the state of North Carolina. And whereas the 2012-13 Lady Vikings Softball Team earned a 12-7 victory over the Robinson Bulldogs on June 1, 2013, to win their second NCHSA 3A State Softball Championship. Whereas the players, coaches, families of the 2012-13 Lady Vikings Softball Team deserve congratulations for their time, effort, and resources that they committed to, quote, "going all the way" in winning the 3A State Softball Championship. The 2012-13 Connolly Ladies Team consisted of the following athletes: the seniors Ellie Dillon, Sarah Hanley, D.J. Rudy, Kelsey Singleton. The juniors on the team were Cory Adams, Julia Alsbrook, Erin Fulter, Danielle Nadu. Nadu, thank you. Ricky Otters, Caroline Robertson, and Olivia Selman. I've got those names correct. Sophomore players were Madison Maloney, Sammy Phillips, and Rachel Widener. And the three freshman players were Kristen Dickens, Savannah Perini, and Cameron Rogister. The coaches of the team were Wayne Dean's head coach, Shane Adams' assistant coach, Meredith Whitehead' assistant coach, Laura Brickhouse' assistant coach, Keith Gold' assistant coach, and Jana Bullard' assistant coach. The last statement in the resolution reads, "Now therefore be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes the outstanding achievements of the 2012-13 D.H. Connolly Ladies Vikings Softball Team and congratulates the players, coaches, and families for bringing the state title to Pitt County, North Carolina, adopted this 19th day of 2013 by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners."
Very good. I want to say congratulations to each of you. We are very, very proud of you. We hear so many comments about the negative activities of our youth, but you are an example of a great positive that you have accomplished and we really appreciate that. And we appreciate you so proudly representing Pitt County. Congratulations. Very good. Let me present this to the coach.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations.
We also have certificates for the players, which you'll get a picture first, that's fine.
Get it in the middle of the girls. Yeah, let the girls kind of let, okay. Get them on, get them.
In the middle of the girls.
Forward. You all have done this before, ladies.
And now if we can present their certificates. A number of the players, I believe, are not here, but we'll entrust these to the coach and you can pass them on. Each certificate is entitled Certificate of Recognition, awarded to, in this case, Cory Adams for her participation in the D.H. Connolly Lady Vikings Softball Team in winning the 2013 NCHSA 3A State Softball Championship, presented on this 19th day of August 2013, and signed by the chairman Jimmy Garris. So first one's Cory Adams. Is she here tonight? Okay. Try to move through these quickly. Julia Alsbrook. Kristen Dickens. Ellie Dillon. Erin Fulter. Sarah Hanley. Ricky Otters. Savannah Perini. Perini. Okay. Sammy Phillips. D.J. Olivia Selman. Kelsey Singleton. Rochelle Widener. Rachel Widener. Did I pass you?
No.
Okay, okay. That's a compliment.
Really, really.
Coach Wayne Dean's. Coach Shane Adams, as soon as he's not here, obviously. Coach Meredith Whitehead. Coach Laura Brickhouse. Coach Keith Gold. And Coach Jana Bullard. If I can trust these to you to get to the balance.
Congratulations to each of you. We're proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having us. Yeah, it is. Well, next on the agenda, the recognition of local Boy Scouts who have earned the rank of Eagle will be recognized. And tonight, we have a couple on the agenda. One who is unable to make it, William Bryan Hargett, was not able to make it tonight, but we will recognize Kevin Orville Day, Douglas Lovell, and then we've added James Clement. So if we can call the first one up and recognize you and bring any family members, anybody who's here to support you. If Eagle Scout Kevin Orville Day will come up first? Is he here with you? Okay.
He can come up.
If you'd like pictures taken, this gentleman here can take them for you if you'd like. The rank of Eagle Scout is obviously earned all across the United States of America. Here in Pitt County, the Boy Scouts of America are very active. And in Pitt County, we probably have a good 3% to 4% of all the Boy Scouts actually earn the rank of Eagle, which is probably twice the national average. And also, I think it's important to note that it takes a lot of planning, it takes, in a lot of cases, hundreds of hours of actual time to do a project, depending upon the, how complicated the project is. So it's no easy feat to earn the rank of Eagle Scout. The chairman's going to present here in just a moment. This certificate says Certificate of Appreciation is awarded to Kevin Day for achieving the Eagle Scout Award for his project. He built a playground at the Ormond Amphitheater in Bath, North Carolina. And that is presented by the County Board of Commissioners this 19th day of August 2013.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations to you and to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Douglas Lovell. Will come forward? Am I pronouncing that last name correct?
Lovell.
Lovell, okay. Again, congratulations. We have a certificate for you. And for your project, you built a bridge at a Time for Science Center in Aiden, North Carolina. So congratulations.
Very good. Congratulations. We're proud of you.
The third recognition tonight is to James Edwin Clement III. For Mr. Clement, he painted all of the fire hydrants in the city of Bath, North Carolina during his Eagle Scout. So congratulations.
Very good. Thank you very much. Congratulations. 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 I'd like to tell you by recognizing the Eagle Scouts, it is just letting them know how much we appreciate their accomplishments and how we feel that it is a significant accomplishment. Because as the manager has already said, it required lots of hours, lots of hard work on your part, and we certainly are very proud of you. You represent our community well. We also thank the parents, because I know that the parents had to be very supportive also. So thank you very much and congratulations. We shall now move forward to our public hearing. And we have one public hearing, and that is on the proposed community college bonds. And Mr. Holder is going to present that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. This next agenda item is the next step in the process as we move toward the November 5 bond referendum on the $19.9 million Pitt Community College Bonds. We do, according to the Local Government Bond Act, and as was announced at your August 5 meeting, tonight is the official public hearing on these bonds. And it will give the public an opportunity to speak to the advisability of the bond order that was introduced to you at your August 5 meeting. And you have that for your second reading in your agenda packets. So at this time, hand it over to the chairman.
Very good. Thank you. And now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this proposed bond for Pitt Community College? Please come forward, give your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Massey. I'm president of Pitt Community College in Winterville, North Carolina. I thank you for giving us the opportunity to bring to the public this very important part of our capital improvement plan to Pitt County. Pitt Community College is continuing to grow as an institution of higher learning. We are experiencing a growth rate even this fall term after a huge increase last year. And as you know, we remain very challenged in terms of meeting the demand of Pitt County residents to access higher education. The proposal we're submitting has two priorities. One is the science building, which will allow us to combine biotechnology, biology, physics, and other sciences in one location across from the construction industrial technology building on campus. The other priority is shifting our basic law enforcement training from the current location on the Greenville Center campus to the main, nearer the main campus and upfitting a private building, purchasing and upfitting that building for that use, freeing up space at the Greenville Center for business and industry training. We are committed to a vigorous campaign of awareness, public awareness about this issue, addressing the issues that you raised in earlier meetings. We have contracted with Faulkner &amp; Associates Public Relations Firm, and Emily Kaufman is here with us. She will provide significant support to our many friends and supporters. The cost of such an effort is not small. It amounts to about $18.50 per $100,000 of assessed property, per taxpayer. We know that that cost is significant, but we also know that the return to the community is significant. It is a major plus for economic development and workforce development, and we feel it will keep Pitt County competitive with all parts of the state of North Carolina in attracting new business and holding on to business. We know that's a very important element, too. So we thank you for your support and we'll be working with you all along the way. We know that this is a major commitment of Pitt County, but then the facilities of Pitt Community College are the responsibility of Pitt County. And so that's why we brought this demand, this request, to you. So thank you very much for your support and allowing us to go forward to the voters for their decision.
Is anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the referendum? Seeing none, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this referendum? Please come forward.
My name is Nancy Coffey. My address is on file. I am not here to speak either in favor or in opposition tonight because I do not have enough information, like the rest of the public, to really make an educated decision on this bond referendum. I, one thing that I, I am very concerned about is that it is going to be hailed in a year where only municipalities are going to go, be elected. So the county, the people in the county, they are really not paying attention. That, to me, I don't see the emergency. I think if we're going to have this, then next year would have been a better year when there was a county, overall county. There are some issues that I, I don't know. You say, this is how much it's going to cost per $100, but that doesn't mean anything to the public. The public cannot grasp that. What the public, you need to tell the public is, if you have a $100,000 house, this is how much it's going to be. If you have a $200,000 house, this is how much your tax, the property tax is going to be increased. That will be helpful, very helpful. My question to you as a board is, what are you prepared to do? Because I feel like it is your responsibility. You agreed to have them, have this referendum. What are you prepared to do to educate the public at large so they grasp that in a year or two, there will be an automatic increase in their property taxes? And you cannot say it's going to be a dollar, how much it's going to be, because that is not going to be determined until, I believe, the bonds are sold. And another concern to me, and I said a concern, is what is going to happen if you, in the meantime, as the county, have to raise taxes for other matters of the county? You know, we are making a little progress, but we are far from being where we need to be. And we're taking on all these projects, new things, and I really have a concern about it. I don't, I don't feel like, I haven't heard anybody talk about it. Nobody knows how much it's going to be. We are going through some hard times. People are still losing jobs. We have things hanging at the federal level, like healthcare. We have things happening at the state level, and all those things may influence a lot of the people in this county. Their jobs, their lifestyles. And so out of the blue, in a municipal election, we are going to come up with something that we have not really, the public at large has not been educated on. I've been in this county for 47 years. I have the greatest admiration, respect, and support for Pitt Community College. I think they do a terrific job. Is this the best time to come up with this bond referendum? I don't think so. I, I don't think, what I hear it's going to be for, I believe, can be postponed a year or two until we know a little more about how Obama's healthcare is going to affect everybody, how many people are going to go from full-time to part-time jobs, how is that going to matter to them? It might not matter to any of you or to me, or, but it matters to a lot of people. You'd be amazed how many people are still struggling out there to keep their homes. And now we're going to say, you know, when you start building, usually, it's more than what we project. That's usually the way it is. And, and, and so I wish you would reconsider this, because I just don't think you have met your obligation to the public and to have a public hearing. Look, there's nobody here. I mean, people don't know about it. And, and the people that want it know about it, and, and they're going to promote it, and they're going to make sure that the supporters go to the polls. Think about it. I am concerned.
Thank you. Is anyone else that would like to speak for or against? Okay. What is the pleasure of the board? First of all, I declare the public hearing closed. Did you have anything else you wanted to say, Duane?
No, sir.
Okay.
Can I comment? Yes. I can add a comment on the, the cost of the bonds and the operating costs. This has been presented earlier at the other meetings, but to retire the debt based upon today's, what a penny yields on the tax rate, to take 1.6 cents to retire the principal of interest on the $19.9 million bond referendum, and it's been estimated that the operating cost would be about another quarter of a penny. So we're saying about 1.850 cents on the tax rate would be the net cumulative effect to implement. I just want to make sure the public understands that and the board again.
And, and we are also going to state on the ballot itself that it's going to require a tax increase, but we do not state the amount.
Correct. We're not allowed to state the amount because technically if, if the economy were to go down in the next year or two, or even if, if the economy were to take off and the tax base were to, to increase, then it would then take less or more than a 1.850 cent tax increase or decrease.
Okay, Mr. James.
Dr. Massey, you said that the advertisement, how much is that going to be that you hired this firm to take it to advertise? The figure, you didn't give the total amount that it would cost to do that. What is the total amount that you're talking about paying this particular company to take it to advertise to see maybe that it passes and so forth? I think the public, we all, well, I'm certainly very much in it, and nobody else might want to be.
Thank you, Mr. James. As I said before, we are committed to a full informational campaign. We want to make voters aware of the cost as well as the benefit of what we're proposing. It has been over 24 years since we've gone to the public for a bond referendum. The cost is undetermined at this point, although the information part of what we're doing can be done with state dollars. So it is no additional cost to the...
I thought you said it was eight cents or something pertaining to when you gave your report, the report pertaining to...
$18.50 is the cost per $100,000 home or property as an additional cost as estimated right now.
Would that be for advertising or that's just for the total cost?
No, that's the cost to the taxpayer.
Okay.
The cost for us, the cost for us is undetermined, although much of the informational cost and informational campaign will be taken from state dollars. The advocacy part, the part where we're actually asking people to vote yes, we have already raised funds to a significant level to cover that, and we will do that with non-state and non-county dollars.
I guess what I'm concerned with, have you already signed a contract with this company to advertise? And you said that she was here, of course.
We are still developing that plan. No, we have not fully signed a contract, but on the other hand, we know with a full informational campaign, we will need to do advertising at a certain level, so we have some general idea of what that will cost. We will raise private funds to cover all those expenses.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Adam Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, speaking with the finance officer as well, I just wanted to clarify that the language in the ballot question will not state that the taxes will increase in an amount to cover the cost of the bond. The ballot question language will state that it will authorize a levy of taxes in an amount sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds. So I just didn't want there to be any misrepresentation about the language, since that's been an issue for this point until now.
That's, that to me says it's going to be a tax increase. But anyway, okay. Any further discussion, questions?
The only thing I would want to reiterate is the question was asked, and there's no way to know at the time it happens, if it does happen. But what Dr. Massey said was that on a $100,000 house, it would be $18.50 more at this present time. Excuse me. And I know that question has been asked, and the citizens do need to know that, and that's kind of...
that's kind of how I like to hear it. I had heard you say it the first time when you spoke, so, but I thought maybe that might be the thing that we need to say.
A dollar fifty per month.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? If not, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, there are two motions that we do need to entertain connected to this hearing, and one is the adoption of the actual order. Following that, the resolution calling for the bond referendum.
And the order is the second reading of the order that...
Correct. That was presented at August 5th meeting. Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motions necessary.
Okay. Do I need to read this? Okay.
I'll second the motion if you need to.
I would suggest you take each motion separately, each action.
Okay. So, Commissioner Johnson, has it been suggested that we take the motion separately? So, the first motion would be approving an order authorizing $19.9 million for community college bonds.
So moved.
That's the first motion.
And that's the second reading of the motion you approved at your last meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we've already done that.
A second.
Yeah, we did it. And we have a second.
Yes.
We did that earlier today. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the order authorizing $19.9 million for community college bonds. Any discussion on this motion? If not, let's vote. Okay, now we need a second motion, and the second motion will be a motion for a resolution calling for a bond referendum on the order authorizing $19.9 million of community college bonds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, Commissioner Johnson?
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner McCarthorn. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say, this, the notice will be published in the Daily Reflector on two separate occasions.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you. We will now have our public addresses to the board.
Yes, sir. We have two people signed up.
Yes, we have two people that signed up. As they are signed up, I will call Mrs. Alice MacArthur first and give your name and your address, please.
Good morning, good evening. My name is Alice MacArthur, and my address is 222 Quail Hollow Road in Greenville. I am one of two citizens that were duly elected to serve as at-large members by the Pitt County EMS Oversight Committee on July 12th. You will be making a decision about who will serve in the two vacant positions at the end of this meeting. Since two other candidates, possibly three, were added to your list of interested candidates after that July 12th meeting, I wanted to share with you my reasons for wanting to serve and why I believe it's important for you to approve the recommendations of the EMS Oversight Committee. I have been a citizen of Pitt County since I came to ECU in 1972. I don't want to do the math. For 34 years, I served the students of Pitt County before retiring three years ago. In that context, I taught and served children with disabilities, children who are most at risk for school failure and the resulting legal and medical consequences of poverty. I wrote over $90,000 worth of grants during that time in order to provide needed services, materials, and opportunities for my students and their families, for my colleagues at my school. I served as a professional development provider, leading teachers to develop more effective and efficient teaching tools in order to better meet the learning styles and needs of the struggling student. I'm also an active member of a group of retired teachers, although I try not to look like that, many who deal with the medical issues and the needs associated with the golden years. It was with concern for three groups: the children and families of Pitt County, particularly those in low-income and poverty-stricken areas, for my grandson and the many active and healthy, and the sick children in Pitt County, and the group of older adults I come in contact with in the community and at church that led me to consider serving on the Pitt County EMS Oversight Committee. I think that I bring an important skill set to this committee. Excuse me. I'm a hard worker. I'm a strong advocate for those who would need and deserve the best EMS services any county can provide them. I've shared a timeline of events in relation to the two additional candidates with my county representative, Tom Johnson, the chair of your committee, Jimmy Garrus, and the commissioner representative on the Oversight Committee, Glenn Webb. I've asked them to share it with you as they see fit before you make your decision tonight. Tonight, you have the opportunity to say to the citizens of Pitt County by your vote that you are honest when you ask for citizen input and participation, that you value their willingness to serve, that you support the committee that you established to oversee the services provided to your constituents, and that you approve the recommendation brought to you by the EMS Oversight Committee to seat me, Alice MacArthur, and Nancy Phelps. We are two citizens who came forward to serve during the time that the vacancies were advertised, who filled out and turned in their applications, who did so openly and honestly, and following the process that you put in place. I appreciate your time and willingness to hear me. Good night.
Thank you. We have one other person that has signed up, and that's Ms. Nancy Coffield. Would you come forward, please?
My name is Nancy Coffield. My address is on file, and I guess I'm here to kill two birds with one stone since I was here. At the last meeting, I heard the chairman made a comment that the reason we have borrowed money to buy the sheriff cars was because we were trying to build our fund balance, and that was number one priority, and, you know, we're working on it. At the same time, we, you agree as a board that you amended the, what, I don't know what you call it, the resolution or whatever that governs the streets, and you decided that you would consider lending money to citizens if there's 75% of them in the neighborhood and their streets are in bad repairs and the developers cannot have the money and the DOT is not getting it. And my question is this: where is that money going to come from? Are you going to charge interest? And what guarantee do you have that these citizens that are caught in the middle of the developers and the DOT are going to be able to repay you? Because every day, again, I hate to repeat myself, but people are losing jobs, people are losing their homes, people are declaring bankruptcy. And while all those people may say, yes, we want the money, and they commit to it, and they commit to making the payment, if they go broke, they're not going to be able to pay you. And if they don't pay you, then who's going to pay? We are. So, I feel like I'm hearing two messages here. One is, we cannot touch the fund balance. It's sacred. Over here on the back door, you're willing to lend money to citizens that want their subdivision, a street fixed. I have a problem with that. I don't think that we need to be in the lending business regardless of the situation or the circumstances. If you help create that circumstances, you need to correct it. But I don't think it's a good idea to start lending, because where is it going to stop? How much are you going to lend? How many more are going to come? I don't, I don't think it's a good idea. And since I was here, I thought I'd let you know how people out there are talking about it. Thank you.
We will now move on to our items for report. The first one is our manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have this report to you. Your next meeting dates in the month of September. You'll have one meeting on Monday, September 16th, at 9:00 a.m. Then you'll have the first Monday in October, which will be Monday, October 7th, and it'll be a nine o'clock regular meeting. Item B, the boards that the county is currently advertising and recruiting for membership for, the Pitt County Child Futility Prevention Team, the Greenville Board of Adjustment, Aiden Planning Board, ECBH, which is the East Carolina Behavioral Health, LME, local management entity, and then the Pitt County Planning Board. Item C is a good news item to report to you regarding what's called an NCAPA award. This stands for the North Carolina American Planning Association Chapter for winning their Outstanding Planning Award for Comprehensive Planning. This was a, an outcome of the NCAPA's committee that looks at different plans that the planning department submit, and this was awarded in their, what they call their comprehensive planning, large community category, and they were impressed with Pitt County's efforts of having a health component to our comprehensive plan. We do want to credit James Rhodes, our planning director, and his staff, Eric Gooby, for their leadership and coordination, coordination in the efforts to update the plan and to include this element to it. They will receive this recognition at the conference this fall. It will be held coming up, and again, this was for the county's 2030, 2030 comprehensive land use plans. We wanted to acknowledge the planning department and staff for their accomplishments on this. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. We would also like to congratulate our planning department. A job well done. Thank you. Our next item for report is from Ms. Booker, which is our 2013 Tax Collections Report.
The Pitt County Combined Tax Collection Rate for Real and Personal Property and for Motor, Registered Motor Vehicles for July 2013 is 7.94, which is an increase as compared with the July 2012 rate of 7.11. So, we have definitely started off the year on a good foot.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Booker? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
That's second.
Motion second. Let's vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is our monthly financial report, and Mr. Holder is going to present that.
You do have your July 2013 monthly financial report in your packet, and again, this represents the first month of fiscal activity for the new fiscal year, or 8.33% of the year. You will note that this July report does show us in a negative cash position, but just so that the board knows, we do book our entries on a cash basis pretty much for 10 months out of our 12 months of the fiscal year. There are two months that are booked on what's called an accrual basis, or just basically booking entries into the prior fiscal year. That'll always be the last, last month of the fiscal year and the first month of a fiscal year. So, our first month, while it does appear on paper to be in a negative position, we actually will be reversing several entries in August that will then bring everything back online. But I will note that if you compare our current year, year-to-date, to where we were at the end of July last year-to-date, we are some $346,000 revenues over expenditures better than where we were at this point last fiscal year.
Any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept that report.
So moved.
Motion second. Let's vote. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Okay, thank you. We will now move into our items for discussion. We have one item there for discussion, and that is a resolution in support of restoring funding to public education. I believe Commissioner James brought this up at our last meeting, and, Mr. Manager, did you want to say something here, or?
I can interject your comment.
Yes.
This resolution, as the chairman said, is an outcome from Commissioner James's, Commissioner's comments at the end of last meeting and his formal request to bring it before the board. We did reach out to Pitt County Schools, their interim superintendent, to help craft some of the language in this. We did tweak it somewhat for our own purposes. The resolution is probably broader than what the initial comments were, and that's why we have it under items for discussion, so if the board wanted to either accept it the way it is, pass it, or if you want us to consider revisions to it and bring it back, or some combination thereof of the two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's been requested by some county commissioners that they would like to redo some of it and maybe add to, and bring it back at the next meeting, and then for us to make a decision on that, if it would, if the board would approve that. But I would like to make just a few comments. I'm the only one up here probably that taught in the classroom for 35 years, a classroom teacher. Teaching now is a great deal, a great deal different than what it used to be. Things have changed so much. You cannot imagine unless you're that classroom teacher, and you're in there and you have no textbooks. Did you know that? The state constitution is, in North Carolina, is a different, is different in the constitution as far as education, public education's concerned. They are to pay the teachers. They are to buy the books. But for about the last six years, no books have been bought, and no teacher in high school has books, if you can believe that. You go in a classroom and try to teach these kids now, and you've got nothing, no books to teach them with, and it's a crying shame. I'm very serious. It's something that the citizens of North Carolina ought to be very much concerned. Now, the Journal of Assemblymen has done some good things. I'm not saying they haven't, but they've done some things that need to be reworked, and education is one of those things. They made too many radical changes. And I'm very serious, if we don't do something about it, public education as you and I know it is going to be a past history. Now, you wait and see. I'm not going to be here to see it. But if they continue on the way that they are, one more year, and we're going to be in Pitt County in bad, bad trouble, because we need, those teachers need to have support. Their morale is low. They haven't had a raise, what, in about four years, Mr. Chairman, or something like that? And there's no hopes of them of getting in it. And what really put the nail in the coffin, as far as I'm concerned, as a past teacher is, if these teachers go to East Carolina, wherever they go, to get an advanced degree, they will be paid no money for that extra degree. What incentive is there for them to take and to improve themselves and to be a better person and to be able to teach our young people and to be better teachers? And I hope as we bring this to this Board of Commissioners at the next meeting, that all of you will have your input, and I hope that we can pass something that's very important that the legislature and the governor of North Carolina will look at it and say, look, we need to make a few changes. We need to support public education, and when we support public education, we are supporting the teachers, the administrators, and not only are we supporting them, remember, it's going to affect East Carolina University at the same time. I know I'm preaching, but that's all right. But I really mean, I'm very sincere about that, and I think if we don't take action and do whatever we can do, that we... that we're not doing our part as we represent the citizens of Pitt County and as we represent the schools here in Pitt County. And I hope that the next meeting that we will have this resolution ready, and I hope that each of you will read it and have an input in it, if you possibly can.
So, Mr. James, are you making a motion that we table this until our next meeting?
Yes, and bring it, and we want it to come back because it's time now to take and to do something as to let the education system know that we have support. Yes.
Don't want a table. Tables kills it, doesn't it?
No, we don't want a table. We just want to bring it back.
Postpone. Okay, fine.
Postpone until the next meeting.
Okay, we want to, so the motion is to postpone the approval of this resolution until our next meeting, which will be September the 16th.
Right.
Do I have a second to that?
I second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
And if any teachers want to have an input, do so. I mean, we need to, somebody needs to get behind it.
My heart, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Owens.
You know, we're a day late on this. General Assembly's not there. Mr. James's points is well taken. They will not be there for some time, so there's no urgency to do this. But I think it's a good resolution as it is. And if there's some members of the board that's got something that they want to add or to critique, that's all good and well, but I'm in favor of what the motion is today's night.
Well, I support it too, but some have requested it, and that's the reason I did, Mr. Chairman. Of course you go there.
Okay. So you have heard the motion. You were not making a motion. You've heard the motion that we postponed it to our September 16th meeting. Any further discussion? We've had a second on that motion, so let's vote. Okay, thank you. The next item, we will move into our items for decision. The first item is the item we added at the request of Commissioner Owens, and it is concerning some pictures to be hung in the courtroom. Mr. Owens, would you like to present that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a letter from the president of the Pitt County Bar Association that goes like this. The members of the bar are interested in the heritage of this county. They have photos of the bar members for about 10 years past, and they're making some, they make them out about every five years. But they're asking permission to exhibit these group photos in the antechamber of the historical Pitt County Superior Court, Room 1. And I think that that would be in keeping with what the decor has had in the past, and I would so move.
Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion? We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. The next item is our State of Emergency Ordinance Amendments, and Mr. Lee is going to present that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is an item that we brought back to you back in October of 2012. But after going back and reviewing it and after some conventions, we found a couple of items that we felt we needed to go back and address. They're very small items, and one was, and I think it's attached in your agenda and had been tracked for your review, but basically just calling it to your attention. One is where we were supposed to post a notice of this at the county courthouse, and with the date with technology and all, so if we ask them to change that to file with the clerk, to the board, to you. And the other item was in the event that we have sustained winds that get greater than 60 miles an hour, that we may actually need to suspend fire, rescue, and EMS services until those winds fall back down. So there are two items that if you do approve today that we do need to address is those changes that were marked in the ordinance that is presented to you. And then I think, Janice, from your standpoint, just the proper steps in doing that in the replacement pages of the code.
Okay, Mr. James.
I have a question. What you going to do, let that guy die, a woman die if it winds above 60 miles an hour? You're going to just leave them out there?
Mr. James, that at some point in time,
Yeah.
that it's not safe for the first responder to be out in the.
Well, I would certainly try to go.
I think we will, and I think, you know, we go back and we look at what do we do under the hurricane policy as far as medical. We try to bring the medical director or our designated into the 911 center to try to help with instructions. Now, you got to remember, we're not talking about gusted winds. We're talking about sustained winds. So you're talking about a condition that's not good at all.
Well, I realize that now, but look, if that guy, I've got a child, and that child needs to go to the doctor, that 60 mile an hour wind's not going to stop me. It's not going to stop anybody else here. So that's up to what EMS wants to do.
Well, the individual could still transport.
Well, I would hope so. But if that individual's going to do it, you mean to tell me we got paid personnel that's not going to do it?
We're saying that we don't want to risk the life of our fire and rescue personnel.
They risk it all the time.
It could be swept off the road into a ditch or in a telephone pole while driving a vehicle.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, Madam Attorney, did you have?
Can I just clarify for that as well, too? This ordinance change is not saying that that will happen. In the overhaul to the emergency management laws that happened last year, one of the things that changed was that when you have a state of emergency declaration, any option that you want to declare must be explicitly listed in your ordinance. We didn't have that option in our ordinance, so at the time a state of emergency is declared, the chairman or his designated who has the authority to sign that state of emergency can choose from these. You don't have to choose that. You make the decision at the time of the emergency. And so it gives it to you as an option, but not one that you have to exercise.
Why don't you just leave it up to the squad as to whether they think it's safe enough or not? Wind might be 60 miles an hour here, but over yonder, it might not be 60 miles an hour, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. James, that's why we do have communications with them, because we can only say what it is here. We can let them know what's going on, and then between that 45 and 60, make that determination. They'll still be notified that they have a pending call. And again, I'm not going to tell you that they're not going to respond, but I'm, with this right here, though, this has got to be in there if we're ever going to enact that state of emergency and utilize that statement.
Excuse me, Mr. James. The operative word here is options. These are just options. And if they're not listed, you don't have those options during that state of emergency. So there are other things listed here that you probably hope are not going to happen and may happen because of what you are finding out here. But when you notify someone who's closer to wherever the incident is, the two of you may make a decision that they can do whatever it is that needs to be done. So I don't have any problem with it, because I think it's something, just like you said, it has to be in here if we ever implemented all of the options, and it's not the only one.
And it's evacuation, whether it's mandatory or voluntary, curfew, restrictions on the sale of ammunition, weapons.
Lots of options.
Sale of alcohol, restricting areas, actually restricting business operations. So there's a lot of different things that do come into play in that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes.
I just want to ask the attorney this question. It says, "Any person violates any provision of this declaration enacted presented to this ordinance shall be guilty of a class-two misdemeanor." What would that class-two misdemeanor be?
That's a good question for a criminal attorney. I can tell you the overhaul of the emergency management law made the penalties tougher than they were prior. So the class-two misdemeanor is a tougher penalty than it was in the past. But off the top of my head, I don't know the exact penalty or range for penalty between a class-one, two, or three misdemeanor.
I guess my concern.
Mr. Chairman.
My concern was that would that have any, and now with what you was talking about, Mr. James, would that have any problems in terms of this person's employment, his, you know, with the squad or what have you? I just wanted to kind of get some clarification on that.
Mr. Chairman. And Norley, you might remember this. I was chairman during the flood. I was flooded out. They flew me to Tarboro. They made, and I voted against it here, they did these very same things that you're talking about. They said, "Mr. James, you can't go back to your house. And if you do, you'll be breaking the law." Now, this happened at the last flood, and I told them point-blank, I was going back to my house, and I went back to my house, but it was a ruling that I had, well, I won't go to what I had in my home. I was going back to that house because of the things that were there, my dogs and so forth. But you make rules and regulations sometimes that are crazy. They're not the way they ought to be. I wish someone else tried to stop me.
Okay.
Same stuff like this.
Yes.
Am I understanding right from Mr. Lee that this would be a decision that would be made by the state and not by the local county or the municipality?
No, sir. This basically is an ordinance for Pitt County.
enforced by Pitt County.
But you have to look at each incident and what would be recommended to the chairman for them to enact in that state of emergency. And again, I think it's a little bit different with what we've got today to where it's not broad. It is more specific, and you have to mention those items in that declaration and have it on file, or it was posted.
Madam Attorney next.
Yeah, I just, to further clarify that answer, Mr. McWellhorn, a class-two misdemeanor has up to 30 days if you have no prior convictions.
I'd just like to make a motion that we concur with the recommendation and approve these amendments.
I have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. The next item is the approval of a pre-application intentive acceptance of the North Carolina Highway Safety Program three-year grant from the sheriff's office. And Ms. Larson, are you going to present that, or is it the sheriff? Okay, please come forward.
Good afternoon, everybody. Time is perfect, right? I want to let Ms. Larson present this grant, and she's worked so hard, I want to put so much time into it. I think it'd be a great benefit to the county and to the citizens if we choose to go this route, and I hope you will consider letting us accept this grant.
Hello, everybody. This is a grant that we've written to the governor's highway safety program. We had to do it early in the year, so we didn't have a lot of time to bring it before the board. But in essence, what this project will allow us to do is to purchase equipment for our forensic lab so we can conduct blood analysis for impaired driving cases. Right now, the backlog of doing the analysis for these cases, the state does it, is at least 12 months. That's a lot of time for the judicial system to sit there and wait for test results. So if our lab with our expertise and this equipment can conduct this analysis of this blood, we can really make a difference in the judicial system with the case, the court docket, and also with removing some of these impaired drivers off the road in a much quicker fashion. Because at this point, if they're waiting 12 months, 18 months, for example, for these cases to come back to let us know whether or not they were truly impaired, the chances are they're on the roadway, and that's a danger to our community. When you got the agenda, at this point, we were looking for approximately a million dollars in equipment. There's been some changes in our grant application since Friday. We found out from the feds that they only want to fund equipment that does just alcohol analysis, not any other type of impaired substance that a driver might be under the influence of, such as marijuana or prescription drugs. So we've removed that equipment from the budget. So really, the budget's probably going to be about a half a million.
Okay, any questions?
You still get the money as you outlined here, or you're saying that's been withdrawn on the grant that you're getting?
Yeah, so what's happened is this money funnels through the state, but it originates from the federal government, from NHTSA, and so it's sitting up there in DC right now, and they've analyzed it, and they asked us the question about, does this equipment just do alcohol? And we came back and we said, "No, it'll do other types of drugs." And they said, "Okay, well, we're only going to fund anything that just does alcohol." So we've removed that. And we really won't know until maybe September if we're actually going to get this grant, but what Raleigh wanted us to do is go ahead and get your signatures.
This is very much needed, ladies and gentlemen. And I move, if you wanted, Mr. Chairman, for us to approve this.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Coulson.
I guess what I'm surprised about is why, they probably don't give you an explanation, but maybe they did. Why would they want marijuana and other forms of drugs and stuff not analyzed? What's the sense of that?
Yeah, I completely agree with you, and I've asked that, too. I know that the federal government recognizes that impaired driving is just now not alcohol-related, that there's a lot of other substances that people are under the influence on. But I don't think, financially speaking, they've quite caught up with that yet. I think they're still just funneling money to analyze alcohol.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Webb.
Thank you. Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, too. As these cases are adjudicated, the district attorney can seek reimbursement for the process, so in essence, it can pay for itself, and it'll really speed things up. I got subpoenaed the other day for a 2006 DWI that I made an arrest on. And these backlogs, and it's also causing cases to get thrown out just because of time out of the system or time in the system. They're getting thrown out by judges eventually just because they've been gone on for so long. So this is very important. Other counties have done it, and they've had a lot of success. Like I said, they're able to get that feedback when the district attorney asks for it, and once the case is adjudicated, then it can pay for itself. So I think it's important that we support this.
Commissioner Webb.
I'm in favor of this, but I had a couple of questions. Is there a lab such as this close by, or could we look to maybe have other counties use our lab and pay us?
Yeah, great question. Right now, the state lab is the main agency, if you will, that's doing the analysis. And I think what we're starting to see is a movement, such as this one here in Pitt County, for local labs to start to do the analysis. And like Commissioner Webb said, it can be fee-based, and it's $600 charged to the defendant if they're convicted. And there's also going to be approximately $600 for the testimony for the analyst to actually come into court and do the presentation. So I do think that we're going to have a movement where you've got local labs, and what we like to do is start out the first year just doing Pitt County. We want to make sure that when we do it, we do it right, and we just start with our own community. And then we would like to see if we've got the resources to, you know, allow Martin Edgecombe to go for our neighboring communities. We can also do their analysis. And I'll let you know, there's about 200 cases, as far as we know, just sitting up in Raleigh right now, just waiting.
Right. But are there other labs that you know of in, say, surrounding counties?
No.
Okay. The other question was kind of on what you just kind of said. In the information we have, it says at the end of the three-year grant, the county would be responsible for just the personnel cost of the chemist.
Right. The first year is where we'll.
And that could, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
And that could still be paid for if we collect enough money. Is that correct?
Yeah, our game plan is for the first year, we'll purchase the equipment, and luckily on this grant, it's 100% funding, so there's no local match required from the county. And then the second and third year, there's a smaller match. But at that point, we'll already have purchased our equipment, so we'll just be paying for the full-time chemist. And then we would like to be self-sustaining in those future years after the funding's done.
Thank you.
Any further questions? We have a motion and a second. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing. And we're already posturing ourselves to do drug testing now, and I've discussed it with the manager, and I think that's a great opportunity for us to make additional money from that. The $600 fee, we've already got a blessing from the Superior Court judges and the district attorneys. They would ask for that money to be given back to us to operate our plans and our goals or in the future to be able to self-sustain that unit over there in drug testing as well as alcohol testing.
Good.
I think it would speed this up. We can get people out of jail faster. We can figure out cost of housing a day, so we in, we in for us all the way around.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll.
Yes, I got one. The backlog of this, of this, would you be up on them much quicker?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
I think that's one of the keys to it, and I think you're on the right track. I think we need to go ahead and look to the future.
Yes, sir. We've already landed that, and we actually have a chemist on hand now that has already been sustained and recognized in court as an expert witness. And we're very blessed to have him, and he's doing a great job. And we're already in the process of testing narcotics, and we want to expand our lab. This is an opportunity to be able to do that.
There's no excuse. It ought to be set.
Satisfied we can do that.
Okay. Continue voting, please. Mr. James. Very good. Thank you. Next item on our agenda. Next item on our agenda is a budget amendment. Eastern Pines EMS Rescue Squad is requesting funds from the EMS fund balance.
Mr. Chairman, I made a motion that we take the money out of the EMS fund balance and transfer that $25,000.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just that this is the order of the plan, right? In other words, this is what we had planned to have happen as we move through, no?
Not, not exactly. Go ahead.
For replacement vehicles.
It is for replacement vehicles. This is, this is a vehicle that, that, I mean, Eastern Pines was involved in the accident, so they've collected some insurance money, and now they're moving forward. But I think with the fleet management program, I think the question that you're asking is that Eastern Pines chose not to be a part of that fleet management.
That was kind of what I thought.
Yeah, I thought it was $10,000, though, the fee that, that you would put on them. I thought we voted that years ago.
That was for the fire departments.
So, we don't have anything in there at all for rescue? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think in an earlier item tonight, you've approved the purchase of a new ambulance, two consent items, that we've been trying to purchase, one new one and, and two remounts.
And we've been doing that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was, that was my question.
So, it's in line, so to speak, is what we're supposed to be doing.
Well, let me kind of back up and explain if I can, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The EMS Oversight Committee developed a fleet replacement plan, like Mr. Lee said. It's a three-year plan. Basically, the, of the 10 EMS squads, there's obviously eight nonprofits. They were asked to either opt in or opt out of the fleet maintenance plan. If they opted in, the county then looked at either remounting or replacing their vehicles. At that time, then the vehicles would be titled in the county's name for the most part. If they opted out, then they chose to purchase vehicles through their own fundraising efforts as such. Eastern Pines was one of the ones that decided to opt out. However, at the end of the three-year period, the EMS Oversight Committee did entertain a request from the, the Eastern Pines squad and did agree to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And one thing that staff is looking at recommending to the Oversight Committee, which we outlined to them, that being that in the next three years, CIP for the equipment replacement, that maybe we will have two tiers of replacement, one for those entities, those nonprofits that opt in totally. Those that don't opt in, there might be a second tier where they might be given $25,000 or some set amount in lieu of opting in the plan. And I think the real, the real reason to opt out is they would like to keep the vehicle titled in their name and have control of it, be able to order the type they want, not necessarily the type the county is ordering otherwise.
That's correct. And the advantage to that is the bulk of that vehicle is being paid for out of non-EMS tax money.
And that's what I wanted to be said.
That's what I wanted to amend.
Thank you. That was what I wanted to be said.
Any further questions or discussion? Let's continue voting. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is appointments and reapportments to the Committee for Employment of People with Disabilities. And you see the list of names on page 56. What is your pleasure?
I would like to recommend Starlet Bott, I think is the way you pronounce her name. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
That came out a long time, Beth.
Oh, the whole list that we've got on here?
Yeah, she, she is, she is a new person, and the rest of the list is reapportments.
I thought she was new, and we had to do, we don't have to do her separately? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we had to do her, and then we did, okay.
Could have been voting all of them.
Jay Daly, Deborah Daughtry, Lee Futral, Lynn Hodges, Pam Hollingsworth, Liz Johnson, John Kramzar, George Perry, Heather Phillips, and Tony Shreaper.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. Next item on page 63 are the appointments to our EMS Oversight Committee, and you see the applicants there in your package. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Alice MacArthur.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Charles Mayo and Nancy Phelps.
Okay.
And I think there are two seats, correct?
There are two seats. And we have three nominees. Are there any additional nominees? Okay, so we will vote them one at a time, Madam Attorney?
In reverse order.
In reverse order. And you nominated Charles Mayo and Nancy Phelps.
Both of those at the same time.
Can we vote for those two at the same time?
It's the same motion.
Well, you have three names, and you have to vote two, so I would take them one at a time in reverse.
We have to take them one at a time, right.
It was not a motion of second at this nomination.
So, the first motion is for Nancy Phelps.
And you can vote twice.
And you can vote twice.
Vote for two people.
That's right, you'll have to, because there are two positions to be filled.
Right.
Okay, so we're voting for Nancy Phelps. I'll have either Nancy Phelps vote, please. Okay. So, that one passes. So, now we will vote for Charles Mayo. Glenn and Eugene, and Melvin. Okay, so that one passes, so we have three. Because that's two. Okay, thank you. We do have a closed session. And, Madam Attorney, will you take us into closed session, please?
I will. It has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143.318, 143.318.11A, Sub 1, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the laws of this state, Sub 3, to consult with an attorney, including or retained by the public body, in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and Sub 4, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?